George tried to look it up one time. We don't know when exactly our house was built.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the December meeting in the Downtown Historic Commission. And we do have a quorum, Ms. Diana, so we can go forward. And first, we'd like to approve the minutes of the regular meeting on June 19th, 2018. They did come out a little late electronically, but did everybody get a chance to read them?
I'm good with them, and I'm making a motion we approve the minutes.
Okay, second. All right, minutes approved. All right, our first new business is 450 East Main Street. And Diana, do you want to...
Sure, I can give you an introduction on this. The main home, which is on 450 East Main Street, they are not proposing to make any changes to that at this time. Right now, they are talking about the three accessory structures. So you have a one-story brick structure that the applicant wants to demolish. You have a one-story vinyl siding structure that the applicant wants to demolish. And then the home that's on the back of the lot on 116 South Highland is a one-story yellow siding framed home. The applicant wishes to demolish this. He would also be okay with someone moving this. It is a contributing home according to the historic district, contributing structure in the East Main Street Historic District of the National Register of Historic Places and the East Main Street Local Designation. The applicant's here, and they, I'm sure, want to present their application to you.
Okay, before we get into that, do you have the pictures that you could put up on the screen and explain each one for our viewing audience?
Yes, if you'll give me a second to find them in here. Okay, so are we on the screen? There we go. This is the main home. There are no proposals to do anything at this time to that. This is one of the accessory structures. Let me flip back so I'm giving the right description here. This is the one-story brick structure. It was probably originally a small garage or a carriage house or something of that sort. It has had a lot of additions and changes to it. Then there is, and the applicant might, I know these pictures a little better than me. This is the contributing home, this picture, the yellow-framed small home. And we have a report from their engineer on the structural soundness of this, which you can review. And then this is the vinyl siding structure that they would wish to demolish, and it really doesn't have any historic significance whatsoever. These are neighboring homes in the area that the applicant provided pictures for us of that. So that just gives you some context of the area. But I will go back to the three structures again, because I think that's the main thing we want to look at. Again, this is the vinyl siding home, or garage, some sort of storage facility that was built probably somewhere in the 1980s. There are some interior pictures of the yellow structure. I think the most significant part of this is probably the front with the Italianate porch on it. And then this is the structure that is brick and has had a great deal of alterations to it.
Okay, and what we'll obviously do is take each one at a time, each piece of property one at a time. But in our rules and procedures, I know that the board here has had a chance to review those, but just to give our audience an idea of what we're talking about here on demolition, it's relatively short, so I'm going to go over it before we get into it and ask Mr. McCarter to come up and give us some detail on it. Of course, the demolition is a tearing down of a principal or accessory structure, which is, we're involved in all three of these. A general principle, since the purpose of the historic zoning is to protect historic properties, the demolition of a building which contributes historically and architecturally to the character and significance of the district is inappropriate and should be avoided. There's guidelines on when it's inappropriate, and there's just a few of them, so I'm going to go over them. A building is of such architectural and historical interest and value that its removal would be detrimental to the public interest. The building is of such old, unusual, and uncommon design or materials that it could not be reproduced, or reproduced without great difficulty and expense. And the last one where it says would be inappropriate, its proposed replacement would make a less positive visual contribution to the district and would disrupt the character or would be visually incompatible. Now demolition is appropriate when, and there's three of them, a building has lost its architectural and historical integrity and importance, and its removal will not result in a more negative, less appropriate visual effect on the district. Second, a building does not contribute to the historical or architectural character and importance of the district, and its removal will result in a more positive, appropriate visual effect on the district. And lastly, the denial of the demolition would result in an economic hardship on the applicant as determined by the commission in accordance with a historic zoning ordinance. Mr. McCarter, would you like to come up to the...
If I may, Chairman Becker, I'd like to ask a couple of questions of staff. This property is all one lot?
Yes, it is.
Lot of record. And its zoning classification allows for this number of units that it has on it, or is there some nonconformance with that zoning classification?
I would say that this is probably some nonconforming things going on, except that, I will say this, as far as I know, the back home is abandoned. You are looking at RS-15 and the RS-8, so...
Okay, two different zoning classifications, okay?
Okay there, but there's, the three units we're talking about are not occupied.
Okay, okay.
So I would say they're being used as storage units essentially right now.
Okay. So if someone were to want to build something new in this area, you think that they, that it's at the max of the density allowed on the property as it sits today?
You know, I'm trying to answer that off the top of my head. I don't know the lot. I would say it's probably not at the max that you could put more on there.
Because of the RS-8 classification along Vine Street?
Right.
Okay. I'm sorry.
And RS-15 in the front.
No problem. I just wanted to clarify where we were density-wise with the property itself.
No problem. I appreciate that question. Mr. McCarter, would you like to come to the podium and state your name and address, and just fill us in a little bit on why you're wanting to do all this?
Again, Bert McCarter. It's a pleasure to be before you guys, ladies and gentlemen. Bert McCarter, I'm from Rutherford County. I live at 1607 Georgetown Lane. Quite frankly, I'm remodeling that house, but that's my legal address as it sits right now. I am, I intend, with the help of you individuals, to, I'm not used to looking at myself on the TV.
Did you pull that mic up a little closer to your mouth?
Sure, sure. I'm used to walking around in my, in my job and talking. I could talk a little bit louder, but what I'm hopeful that we'll be able to do is to essentially knock these homes down, or in the alternative, if there's other individuals, other companies, other people that may want them, to be able to take them off and find some value for them. Quite frankly, I don't know if they're in the materials, but with respect to the yellow home, we attached an inspection report. When I was going through the negotiations of buying this property from Mr. Hudson, I hired an inspector to come out and evaluate the property. And on the exterior of the home, while it looks like it's really neat and nice and has some value, Mr. Baker, who had conducted the inspection, quite frankly, told me that it's essentially worthless, that there are significant and serious problems to it, foundation problems, asbestos problems, mold problems, just a laundry list of issues. And so I had various different contractors go out and look at it. Several looked at it and said, I, two out of the three said, you just need to plow this thing down. It has no value. It's going to be significant financially to even make it habitable. And as a halfway decent lawyer, the first question was, well, what's it going to take to make something of this nature habitable? And one of the guys said, just to be able to live in it, it would take, take a minimum of $200,000, just to live in it. And that's not bringing it to the standard of what we're hoping we can do with 450 East Main. And obviously, what we do on 450 East Main, we're going to want to do with anything else that we're allowed to do on the property. And so in looking at that, it's going to run you $250, $300 a square foot to make it habitable, and that's awfully concerning to me. And so, you know, I think a second issue that I would respectfully ask you guys to consider is, during this process, I guess I've owned this home and property for six to eight months now, and it's taken us a little while to even kind of get up and going with my team here. But during that process, I started to realize that living on Main Street, that there are certain aspects of it that become a security risk, quite frankly. And the yellow house, we've had several individuals, homeless individuals, transient people, that we've had to initiate law enforcement to come over to our home. And having a young family, I've got a nine-year-old, a seven-year-old, and a 14-year-old family and a wife that wants to live in this property. And having a security risk with several different points of entry out there on the outside, that's caused even further concern than what we once had with the inspection report. So I would respectfully ask, in making a determination, that you take that into account. Looking at the other two structures, the vinyl structure, I, you know, I'm certainly happy, able, and willing to field any questions with respect to it. It looks like it's been added significantly later. It really has very little value. It's essentially a one-car garage. Obviously, it has no value to what we want to do. And then the other structure appears to be something that's been added on on several occasions. It's about to fall down, quite frankly. I didn't see any value in having Mr. Baker to do an inspection report on that and spend the money. I mean, it was pretty clear when you walk around the exterior of the home, at least to where the carriage house was, they've added a window where I presume was a garage door opening. The brick is separated in a, in a number of spots. It's, it has really no value to it, and I would respectfully ask that we be allowed to knock that down. With that being said, I'm happy to field any type of questions. I think the questions about what we're going to do, or what we intend to do, or what we're proposing to do would be better, better situated for my landscape architect and our, and our architect. But, you know, we would respectfully ask to give them the opportunity to, to either demolish or remove those. Now, I will say this, I have spoken with Mr. James Manning from Oakland's Mansion, and got to know him, you know, previous to this. We had a, we had a, I guess, a chandelier in the big house, the 450 East Main, that we donated to them, that I guess once was in Oakland's Mansion here very recently. And in speaking with him, I discussed the possibility with respect to the yellow house, if it would be something, because it does, the outside of it, where the porch sits, looks very similar to Oakland's Mansion. And I don't know if it, you know, obviously, the Oakland's Mansion people once owned the house that we're in, 450 East Main, I didn't know if it would have any significance to him, if they would want that, if they would want to propose to the city to get some additional land, which I know they have that option to do. I think that's a possibility. He certainly was interested, was going to talk with a number of his board members about coming over and taking that home and relocating it. And I will tell you this, they will have to spend a lot of money on that. I mean, the foundation is in such poor shape, but maybe the, the front portion of it could be salvaged and saved. But he expressed some interest in that. He hasn't given me a definitive answer. I think he has to propose that to his board members, but once, once I have that answer, that, that could be a potential option. But what I'm essentially asking of you all today is to, even if it's an and/or, if I can find somebody that would like to take these structures, obviously, obviously, that would be the first thing that I would want to do. Not trying to take issue with the words used demolish. I mean, that's not my sole intent. It's just to go in there, plow them down, demolish them. If someone wants them, someone wants to take them away and find some sort of use, obviously, I am for that. But with respect to what we're trying to do to the property at 450 East Main, we just believe that for security reasons, economic reasons, that it would be, we would be better served, and quite frankly, the city would be better served if we were allowed to proceed in the manner that, I know Ms. Anderson looks like she's got a copy of what we're, what we're looking to do, just very, you know, preliminarily. But if, if given the opportunity, we're going to do something that we hope that the city would, would take a lot of pride in. Certainly, you guys would take a lot of pride in.
Okay, well, let's clarify. Today, we're just, this board's being asked to approve demolition of the three structures.
Absolutely. And I, I'm just throwing that in there to show that, you know, just, I don't want to just go in there and demolish some, some structures and it just sit there. I mean, we've got a, we've got a full-scale plan that we're going to look at, that we'll present to you guys at a later date. But we've, we've tried to give you at least some idea as to what we're looking at doing, even though you're not going to vote on that today. I think it's a good template for what we're looking to do for you guys to consider at a later date.
Okay. That that will be done at a future time. So anything you want to do, if there is approval to demolish these structures, then you will be back to present what you want to do to the property.
I think the rules require me to, absolutely.
Any questions from the board?
The, so the, the cost for repair of the structure is a verbal that you received from the two or three contractors that looked at it? I didn't, I didn't find it in the nice presentation that was provided. So is it verbal?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And I spoke with Mr. Jeff Crowell from Crowell Home Building, who's, who had looked at, I think he's done a couple of homes in the downtown area. He came out and looked at it. That, he gave me a verbal, and it was just really kind of off the cuff. I mean, I can tell you, it won't be any less than 200 grand, was his exact words, just to make it habitable. So I don't have anything. I mean, obviously, I could get that for you if you need it.
Did they, did they work through Centrec or through yourself?
Through the...
The structural report and stuff, did it all come through the architectural firm?
I had not even employed these, these folks before. I mean, I went, when I was in negotiations with Mr. Hudson, that's, I hired Mr. Baker myself to do inspection.
Okay, okay, that's fine. Has this property been before us before?
No, not to my knowledge.
Since I've been...
Okay.
Yes. When, when Denny and Thesa Hastings, are you talking about that?
Yes.
Yeah. Denny and Thesa bought it from Ms. Wood about 1995. I'm not sure. They spent like two years renovating it, working inside, and did wonderful things to it because Ms. Wood was elderly and her husband was deceased. And at that time, she, the yellow house was rented, and I think, well, the little red brick was rented. The white, the white structure was not built till the Hastings built it around 1995. They built it as a tool, tool shed, garage-ish. But it wasn't built in the 80s. It was built in when Denny and Thesa built it. And they added, all of this came before, well, I wasn't here. I mean, I was in my house, and I watched all this. And I was friends with Denny and Thesa, so I know the house and the things well. But...
You're talking about the 116 South Highland? Which one are you talking, are you talking about, the vinyl structure?
The vinyl structure wasn't till 1995.
Okay.
Denny and Thesa built that to house tools and stuff. And Ms. Wood always rented the yellow house.
Before you go into that, so that, that got approved even with the vinyl siding? Evidently?
Yes. And I'm, yes.
All right. Before this board, current board is, okay.
Yes. Or, I don't, or not approved. I don't know. But it was built then.
The, the other brick structure, do you have any idea when that was built?
No, no, I don't.
David, I could add.
Oh.
Okay.
Bill's got that.
I've researched this property a little bit prior to the meeting as well, just so I could have my facts together. Looks like the carriage house was the original, the beginnings of that brick structure, and it was on the Sanborn map in 1914 as just a carriage house. By 1924, it had the L-shaped addition put on the back of it. And it's roughly the same shape to this day, except for the exterior alterations, like the bay window and things that muddy it up pretty bad.
Mm-hmm. And the vinyl siding?
The vinyl siding.
And the vinyl siding on one side.
And so it appears that that, you said it was rented, so it must have been turned into some sort of residential space at some point.
It was rented when Ms. Wood lived there. And then when Bubba, for the last, when Mr. Hudson, for the last 10 years, it's either been rented or inhabited, not, not the whole time. And the yellow house has too. But before that, the yellow house was an office, office space. And then I know that, I know at least Bubba had, it rented for office space for at least a couple of years. And then it was rented to different people who have lived there.
Do we know where the, because that house is not original to the property, the 116 South Highland?
Actually, it's, it's original to Main Street.
Original to?
It was there, just to clarify, I'll back up and give you the whole thing here. Matthias Brickell-Murphy owned the property. The third owner was Montfort Fletcher Jordan, who owned a couple of local hotels. This was prior to his owning the hotels. But this original structure actually appears on the 1878 Beers map facing East Main Street. Jordan purchased the property in 1870, and that's both lots that we see, the Vine Street lot and the Main Street lot. It was one lot. As most of the Main Street lots did, it extended to Vine originally. So the yellow structure...
What year did that show up?
It's visible on the 1878 Beers map. The owner had purchased the property in 1870, so sometime between '70 and '78 is most likely when the yellow house was built. It does have the Italianate front, much like other buildings from that era.
Any other general questions? Well, let's start off with the easiest one. Let's start off with the vinyl structure.
Absolutely.
Any comments specifically to that structure?
It's non-contributing. It's nonconforming.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we allow the demolition, demolition of the vinyl structure.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those not in favor, motion carries. Okay, let's go to the brick structure, which was originally built evidently as a carriage home in around 1914. And any specific comments to that structure?
I would personally state that I feel that the original character of the building's been lost, and probably the structural integrity as well. It is old enough to save, but...
And most of the carriage houses along East Main have disappeared, the original carriage houses.
I'll make a motion. Will you approve the demolition of the carriage house?
I'll second.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those not in favor, that motion carries. Okay, the last structure is the one at 116 South Highland. Evidently, that originally faced East Main Street and was built somewhere around 1878. Questions?
You know, we had a request for demolition earlier this year for property on, is it Lidle Street?
College.
College. And, you know, it came down to an economic situation there, for me anyway, that, that we approved that, that demolition. I don't remember when that happened, May or June or sometime like that. And that's why I was asking the question about, I don't even, I don't know if Ms. Baughman actually had quotes on it, but she may have had, presented some quotes to us about that.
She did.
Yeah, okay. But we had a similar situation where with, we were going to, for her to rehab it, she was basically taking the roof off the house, you know, for her to be able to reestablish it to be habitable at all. And I'm just telling you what we did back then and why I think we did that. But that's basically my comments about it.
But Rick, I have a comment. That was not a contributing factor. Are you saying yes? Yes, it was, Deborah?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, no, I'm just listening. Yeah, I'm just listening, yeah.
That was not, I think if we go back to the minutes, I think it was in June, it was not a contributing factor to the historic district. And that's something that we're going to have to move on coming up, I think, is what's going to happen to that house. But I've, I had, I, when I was thinking about this, this yellow house, and I was looking at your three site plans that you sent us, which was great to have those, by the way, one, the existing, and then one what you'd really like to do, and then another option if you left the buildings standing. And since we've already approved the demolition or removal of the two smaller buildings, and I'm looking at your plan, which was your third conceptual site, no, your second conceptual site plan, I'm wondering why you could not use the yellow house for your pool house? And have you given that any thought? And how much will your pool house cost in comparison?
Well, obviously, and I think that's why Mr. Becker suggested that we're not here for that. I haven't quoted the pool house out, but I can tell you, for what we want to do, it would be a significant cost, I would imagine. With respect, are you suggesting maybe that I should move the yellow house in some sort of manner?
Well, and I'm, when I'm looking at your, at your site plan here, I see where your pool is going to be located, and it's not that far away from the yellow house, the back side of the yellow house. And I have a pool, and I, I have to walk ways to, to my house.
Sure.
And that was, that was, that was a really big question, because I think we have to be really careful about allowing demolition in our historic district. I think we've made some mistakes in the, in the past. We never have had anything this old and, and contributing to our district as, as this house happens to be. So we haven't been faced with that before, and I think it's not something we can do lightly. I think we have to, we have, this is, this is serious. And if we take the steps to, to allow that to be either moved or demolished, we're setting a precedent, and people don't forget about those. And we've had things fall back on us before, and I don't want us to do that again. And I really, I really did study this tome, and I appreciate it. But I was thinking about in, in all the things, you know, all the pictures that your inspector took of the yellow house, and of the crawl space, and of the attic, and of the exterior. And I was thinking... And I was thinking about, mm, I think it's been three years ago, one of my sons purchased an old house in Chattanooga as his first house, and it needed a lot of work. And he himself addressed all the moisture problems in the crawl space that your inspector listed would have to be done. You know, the vinyl, moisture barrier, the fans forever, the concrete blocks with the jacks on them to, to level out his floors upstairs. He had to deal with a leak in one of the showers and put a new subfloor in. So, and, and the difference was, his was stucco, his exterior was stucco rather than brick like yours. So he didn't have to get a brick mason, but he certainly had a lot of stucco to, to chip off and then replace. And so I don't want us to just lightly think this can't, this can't be done. I just think we need to talk about it some.
If I, if, and I don't know if you were directing, you know, I think anything can be done for whatever you're willing to pay for it. I mean, at the end of the day, you've got siding that's got asbestos in it, we're gonna have to abate that, take it away, get experts in there to handle that. Obviously, if I, I don't know about how I would move the structure. I mean, one of the main things that I'm concerned about, and quite frankly, my wife is concerned about, and she's the one that I go home to every night, is the security risk. And I, I would have to move it. Right now, you've got so many points of entry over on the corner of Vine and Highland that, you know, I'm not trying to be difficult, disrespectful, or rude, but that's, that's the main thing. I mean, I don't want to sound like the economic part is not important, but when you come to your property and you've got homeless people living in your home, it doesn't give me or my family a really good, warm and fuzzy feeling. And so, to me, that, that's the greater concern for my family and our particular interest. I understand the history and wanting not to set a precedent. If anybody understands precedence lawyer, I understand that and understand how important that is. But I, I go back to one of the things that Ms. White said and Mr. Becker said, somehow there was some sort of precedence to allow a bunch of vinyl siding on 450 East Main. I want this to be a very tasteful, I want it to be something that the city and, and this board and the people within this community will take a lot of pride in. Right now, when I look at 450 East Main and, and the acre or so that is there, I can't think that anybody's taking any pride in that. I certainly don't take any pride in looking at 116 Highland Street. I certainly don't take any pride in when I walk in that somebody's underneath in, in the foundation, living there. I don't take pride in the fact that I walk out the back door and my two kids are running around and there are syringes in the back. These are the types of things that concern me, worry me, and I want to clean this up. And while I understand your son and what he did with his home in Chattanooga three years ago, we're talking about 2018, 2019, and $2,020, and that's gonna be a very, very expensive ordeal. That's why, and, and to Mr. Cantrell's point, I, I guess I could have gotten an individual to come in here and told him in here with me, and they could tell you about how much it's gonna cost. But when you look at the inspection report that I did, and I'll go back to, and I don't know if I shared this in my opening remarks, but Mr. Baker, when he walked, he said, I, I'm surprised somebody hadn't died of carbon monoxide in this home. And that's a real serious and significant problem. I, I, I'm sure that those are the types of things that can be fixed, but as a family going into it, this is my first impression of, of that home. I've got homeless people and I've got serious and significant problems. You know, the thought process of maybe moving it or fixing it up, or, you know, that's just something that I'm hopeful that you individuals, a part of this commission, will, will take it as seriously as my family is.
Don't you think that that homeless situation is the result of just the absence of anybody being available there?
Yeah.
I mean, because, man, I owned an acre at Maine and, and South Manny and facing, facing Vine, and we never had such a situation.
Well, it's not the greatest corner. It's just, it's just a different corner.
Mr. McCarter, do you-
Not secure.
Do you intend to fence the lot?
I do, I do. It's our intention to fence it, you know, obviously, and I have to present whatever we're looking at doing. We would, we would, we would hope to incorporate some of the wrought iron, but it's gonna be largely brick. And it, and to the extent that we can, we're gonna try to use it all the way to the setback, which if you'll see, the yellow house is really kinda sits away from the sidewalks to kinda recapture some of that land, and that will be all the way around and all the way down Ms. Ishid's property and all the way to Mr. Smith's property. So that, that's what we intend to do, if given the opportunity by this board.
So if, if that's able to go through, your security situation should be resolved, whether you demolish the 116 South Highland or not, because you would just put the fence around the perimeter?
I can't put the fence around the perimeter because the home is there.
Because what?
Because the home is there. I, I intend, if given the opportunity, to either move the home or demolish the home, is to take that brick wall and wrought iron all the way to the setback and all the way around. Right now, the yellow house has several windows on the front with a door with the access point, and then all the way down Vine Street has several different access points. That's not gonna change whether I live there or not. People were living there before when Mr. Hudson told me there was homeless guy living underneath the house. I mean, whether, and he was there. Now, I don't know to what extent he paid attention to that, but I know that's what he told me. And I certainly take, take him at his word, because he's trying to sell me the house, and I can't think a man would tell me something like that if it wasn't true while we're negotiating, so.
So there's not any room to put that fence along the Vine Street because the house is so close to the sidewalk?
I don't know if there's enough, and there may be enough room. It's not something that I would be interested in doing as an owner.
Speaking of-
Whoa, whoa, sorry, go ahead.
Sorry. Speaking of pride, I knew Ms. Wood when she lived there, and she was very proud of her house. And then I knew Denny and Thesa, and I was so happy, because we moved into our house and we bought the family house in '86. And when Denny and Thesa decided, well, when Ms. Wood died, and Denny and Thesa decided to renovate, they spent a lot of time and money, a lot of money, and energy, and they did it. They wanted to do it the right way, and they took pride in it. And they added those beautiful brick, brick wall, and they had beautiful landscaping in the back, and it was all done by a landscape architect, and it, it, it was just a place of pride. And I used to say, before my magnolias on Highland grew up so much, that I could look out my, my two windows of my house and look on the prettiest houses in the, in the, in town, which was 450 East Main, I'd look over there and it was immaculate. And I would look out my porch and I would see the Smyce House, which is just gorgeous. But in the last ten years, George and I have watched the house and the whole property deteriorate. You can probably go over there and count the shutters that are, I mean, that are off the windows. They've been off for years. It's just deteriorated, and the, and people have rented it, people have, I don't know who added on the, the random fence onto the yellow house a couple of years ago. I don't know if Bubba did it when he was there, or it was renters. I've seen renters come in and out of there. I've seen Ed Netherland had an office there for several years. It's just deteriorated, and we're just very much in favor of what the McCarters want to do to enhance our neighborhood and our downtown area. They want to put the, the time and the effort and the money into it and the good taste, and they want to do it right, and it means a lot to us. And I was looking down here on the procedure list, I'm not big on all this, you know? But I do see that there's a difference. I mean, we are, the determination of economic hardship, and I'm talking about the deteriorated yellow house with the asbestos in the, I've walked over there. The floors are falling in. The market value of the property as it exists, Bubba tried to sell it for years and couldn't sell it. Was gonna sell it at auction, couldn't in any way meet what he had put into it at that, years ago. And compare this to the market value of the property with the proposed additions and the renovations that the McCarters want to do with it. And I, I'm just very much in favor of being able to look out and seeing a beautiful area again next door to me, because I just think the house is wonderful.
I have a question, maybe for staff. The thirty-foot setback that we see on this, since this is a corner lot and there are no real sides, they all face the street, this thirty-foot setback is the area, it, it, no one could build inside of that thirty-foot setback if, if they decided to add something, am I correct?
Right.
So the structure, yeah, it couldn't be put back there, it's already there. That thirty-foot-
It possibly could. You know, I'm not sure we were completely smart when we did this, but in 1984, we adopted a suburban zoning for all of our old downtown area. So, obviously, this is a legal, non-conforming structure in terms of the setback. It was there way before our zoning ordinance went into effect. We have, I think, both here and in the planning commission, approved a variety of variances from the zoning setbacks for this part of town, where you're replacing something that either to go back where it was or to be consistent with the rest of the neighborhood. So, that, and we're in fact working on, in addition to our city core overlay, which will have some other setback discussion in it to, to accommodate the part of our community that was built before we adopted suburban zoning. So it's, we can't say that, yes, you could build it back, but certainly it's a possibility that they could.
I guess the real point I was trying to get to is, you know, if not this house, really nothing else could go back in that space. And, and the plans I see really call for mainly trees and landscaping in this space. I, so, so I guess the real point I'm boiling down to is it doesn't appear this is taking away a lot of, of your space that you need to use, and the removal is really just because of the condition.
That's correct.
And I also want to point out the asbestos, asbestos siding should not pose any threat to anybody. The only reason that stuff's threatening is if you breathe it. And you can get reproductions of those tiles. I've used them recently as a common exterior covering used in the 40s and 50s, and GAF makes a non-asbestos replica of it that you can buy. The foundation problems, this is a peer-built house, it didn't have a solid foundation, so the foundation was added after the structure was moved. And really, there are only some key points that are necessary to support this. Now, certainly, the floor joists and things like that are variables. But as far as the, the real foundation of the home, this gable-front and wing-style house with the logs underneath it, that was literally picked up and moved once before, I really feel could be brought back, and, and it doesn't require a new foundation. It could be put back up on piers. It's just such a classic example of Rutherford County architecture. It's, it's a real struggle to, to see a reason to remove this structure, Bert.
I understand.
And I hate that you, you having problems with vagrants and people entering your, in your property. My house was built in, in this neighborhood, oh, golly, thirty-seven years ago. And I used to have people just walk in my front door, thinking that it was a place of business, because it's a contemporary house. And, and so I had a lot of visitors that I didn't want. And, and our neighborhood has a lot of people who are going from one section of town to the other or walking to the bus station. And so we've, we've, our children have grown up with that, and it's not something new. And just have to be, just always have to warn them to be careful. Now, having them on your property and, or, and/or under your house, I understand, is a problem. But I would also assume that you looked into this before you bought this property as far as the, the regulations in the historic district and just the situation that we're all in, in our little downtown district. Is that, is that right?
Did I look into the, the rules and regulations?
That, and just, you know, interviewing people to see-
I did interview, I did interview people, to, Ms. White being one of them. I, you know, I asked her, I said, what's, what's the crime like, what's it like living downtown? She was very candid, upfront, honest. I think she said she's only had one issue in a number of years. She certainly didn't tell me that homeless people had got in her garage, that, you know, I didn't, she didn't tell me any of those types of things. She said she had one issue. I was comfortable with what she had advised me about. Certainly asked Ms. Ishid, who's two doors down. I met with Mr. Smith, and they hadn't had any issues. So, you know, what I'd been told is that no issues, you know, so.
If you live there, you need to make it secure for your children, for yourself coming in and out, for your, for your dogs. That's why we, I don't, why we built our fence, and why we built our garage, which we had to come before the historic zoning for. We built it to be secure when we're in there. And I can see where, with all this open area on his whole block that he's so fortunate to have, I wish our property still went back there, and, but it, it's not secure. And to make the improvements that, that they want to make, and to live there and enjoy it and raise their family, it does need to be secure.
Well, the security part's gonna be upcoming.
Right.
And, and I think, the point I tried to make earlier was that to secure the acre that he has there could incorporate the 116 South Vine Street. I mean-
That's what I'm saying, David.
Yeah, it's, there's plenty of room off the South Highland to, to have your security fence go in front of that house, and still, if it's wrought iron, it's still gonna show, and brick is still gonna show some of the, the style of that particular property.
But they're also saying that they don't want to put that much money into that house that it would take to have it even, well, then they don't, they don't need to use it like that.
I'll speak up and say that I'm struggling a little bit with the fact that the home, it says here, the home is listed as a contributing structure in the historic district. And, I mean, you drive by it and you do look at it and appreciate it. And when you look at the guidelines, number one, saying that, you know, that it could, it's appropriate to demolish if and when the building has lost its architectural and historical integrity. And I don't think I could sit here and say that I feel like, looking at it, it's, it's lost that. It is a piece of history, and it is sitting there. I understand the constraints that it brings with security and that, I, I get that, I, I do. I do feel like, I, I hope this body would support whatever changes you could bring forward to update or upgrade or add whatever it takes to make that corner secure. And I know that it does take money to do that, but it also takes money to demolish and build a pool, And I know that it does take money to do that, but it also takes money to demolish and build a pool and pool house and things like that as well. So that's where I'm struggling with the fact that it is a, it is listed. It's contributing structure to the historic district. And that makes it really challenging.
Question for staff. Is there any, anything limiting him from putting this fence around the front of the home?
The front of the home?
A solid fence with no openings?
I'm gonna ask Donald. I know it would be fine along the sides. As far as putting a fence in the front, because it is a corner lot on this back home, can they fence what would be the front of the house with a wrought iron-
That doesn't sound like a positive visual effect.
But if it had a gate that led into that front, let me go back to-
I think fencing this district is subject to review of this-
This board.
Okay, thank you.
But there wouldn't be anything in the zoning ordinance that would prevent it in the front? Okay.
It's currently not occupied. Therefore, it's really a necessary structure at the moment.
And I think that would depend somewhat, assuming that this is gonna stay and be incorporated, what the applicant is going to do with it, whether he wants to, in the future, rent it out as a rental property on his house, which, not sure that that's lost its grandfathering. I wouldn't, but that's at least possible. Or if it's going to be a necessary structure and essentially a pool house and there's not really a fence in front of the structure at that time, it's just- the front would probably be what's facing the pool. I mean, from a, from a practical, practical standpoint, the front would be what's facing the pool. And this would, I don't believe a fencing around that would be prohibited. You all would have to see the fence plans as well as the plans for what the structure would be used for. And that would all factor into your decision on that.
Yeah, given the current zoning classification of the property, so he could, or any property owner, he could resubdivide this lot, okay? And create an eight-thousand-square-foot lot and maintain the structure fronting Vine Street on an independent lot, okay? So that goes back to my initial question when I first asked at the beginning of the meeting about the density issue and clarifying the zoning classifications that we have. The other question I have, Ms. Tomlin, is did anyone with building codes by chance review the structural report for this home?
No one has reviewed it. And we have not, this information comes from the applicant. We have not had an independent opinion.
Okay, okay. And, you know, if you look at the, at the map itself for the historic zoning classification, which is in the booklet that we have provided, it's one of the very, very few properties that includes a structure that fronts on Vine Street. Okay?
What page is that on?
It doesn't have a page number. It's that document that, right here. Scroll up a little bit. I can't do it. You have to do it. She's got it. Somebody's doing it.
I'll just look over here.
It's on the screen.
Do you want the-
Zoning map, historic zoning map.
Okay.
Go up just a little bit, so you can see the whole property. Up, down the other way.
Right, I'm not sure which one-
There it is, right there.
Is that what you wanna see? Okay, there we go.
Okay. So you see his property is a little bit darker shaded color in there. And the balance of the properties are in this particular historic zoning classification. Or, yeah, right there is his.
Structures are in this historic district.
Includes that structure. So it's actually a structure that's, you know, to some extent, contributing to East Main, but it has no visual impact on East Main Street. Okay? Even though we call it the East Main Historic District, like we've got properties in there on, you know, North Manny or whatever.
Well, yeah, but it's still, it's still incorporated in the zone.
Correct, it is incorporated in the zone, but, you know, did we draw the map wrong to start with? You know, I don't know.
Well, I don't, I don't think that the, our founding fathers of this historic zone were just looking at properties facing East Main Street. Because obviously, it goes well north of East Main. And even our 112 South Manny, that particular one didn't get incorporated into the zone because it was a business, it was a dental business at the time. But the, when this was originally developed, you can see that the, the other yellow properties right next to that, obviously, they're still in the zone also. Went all the way back to Vine Street. I guess a lot depended on who the owner was at the time.
Oh, you can't go by that map. You gotta go by this one. This is the outline.
No, I know what you were pointing.
No, they're not, yeah.
You gotta go by this. That's land use.
Rick, excuse me, could you repeat what you said about when, after, after you talked about the zoning? Just in this last conversation, I could not hear you, I'm sorry. About it, it's, there's no problem with the setback?
No, 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 it, not a problem with the setback. It just has the potential that he can create a, he can resubdivide the lot, create an additional lot that has this house setting on that lot.
Okay.
Okay. Now, when he goes to do that, I don't know, if he's got some, you know, setback variances, that may have to be issued along with that re-subdivision of the property. But how large is the site currently? Is it 1.5 acres or?
1.3.
1.1.1 something, okay? But anyway, he could, you know, create a separate lot that would be eighty by one hundred or, you know, ninety by ninety or some number like that. As long as it's a minimum of eight thousand square feet of lot area and have that house setting on there, carve it out, and then sell it. And he has that opportunity under the zoning classification. I mean, what I would not like to see is, you know, the classification, creating a whole bunch of lots like that down through there. Would not like to see that, although he'd have every right to do it. I don't know what kind of frontage he has along Vine Street there, but it looks like he's probably got, hmm, 135 feet or better. Long Vine Street, depth of maybe a hundred feet. So, you know, he's got a potential for creating at least two lots, maybe three back there.
How does that address what he's trying to accomplish, though?
Correct, but, you know, it may alter his plans on what he wants to do. I don't know that. I mean, if I were owning the property and coming here, and I would be, I would be thinking, "Okay, what's plan B? What's plan C if I don't want to deal with this home?" Okay? Which, obviously, he doesn't want to deal with it. He's bought it, but he, I guess he's bought it, don't want to deal with it. But he's got to, and that would be one of the options I'd look at. It still gets it preserved, okay? But he just carves out a piece of it, maybe compromises his pool plan a little bit, but probably not a whole lot. But that's an option that you may be looking to come before us later. Now, we have no say in the recreation of a lot. That's up to the planning commission itself. It's not up to us.
I would say that assuming all that, the new owner would be in this position asking your permission to move it or take it down. And you would be looking at the same question.
Correct. But it could be a new owner that wants to pursue a rehab.
Certainly possible.
As well. I'm just telling you that there's some other alternatives other than this property remaining as one large property.
Thank you, Rick.
Any more comments from any of the other board members on 116 South Island?
The last thing I think I would add is it appears that the way the structure sits on the corner and being an L shape, it adds some great privacy to the pool area. It would, it would be a lot faster than your landscaping as far as the privacy goes. And, yeah, not much help, but I had to add it.
And I would also add that I know, it sounds like Mr. Carter's gonna put a substantial investment in the property that will, either way, whether the yellow houses there or not, improve things significantly. And I know what his wishes are, but I know that either way, I appreciate the effort that, and what it will do to the area either way.
Oh, yes.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Do I have a motion?
I have, I have a question before that. In, when Ms. Tomlin sent us the, you know, our rules of order to, so we remember what we were supposed to be doing, and it was talking about, oh, shoot, now I've lost it. The question was, public hearing. Is that the next step?
What?
No?
What?
A public hearing? If we, if we deny you being able to demolish, then we could, you could request a public hearing, I guess. Is that how it-
I believe this is the public hearing. This was notice-
Yeah.
It's been noticed in the paper.
Oh, okay.
Advertised as a public hearing on this issue.
For some reason, I thought there was, had to be another one.
And actually, I guess we haven't opened it for a public hearing yet. I don't know if there's someone else here from the public that would want to speak, which we probably should do, we definitely should do, before we have a motion on the matter.
Okay.
We all talked so long, I forgot we hadn't opened a public hearing, but-
Okay, well, I'll make that request if there's anybody in the audience that would like to make a comment on this 116 South Island demolition. There appears to be no one.
I move to demolish the 116 North, what, is it North Island? No, South Island, South Allen Avenue, as requested.
Is there a second on that?
I'll second her motion.
Okay. Those in favor of the motion to demolish 116, say aye.
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 That was two. Those not in favor?
Nay.
Nay. One, two, three, four, five, five not in favor. Sorry, didn't, uh, carry.
All I can say, and I'm sorry, I don't mean to be speaking out of order, but, you know, I appreciate the fact I've made a significant investment, but, you know, obviously, if I'm not allowed to do the things that I think are best for my family, then, you know, somebody else will just be up here making recommendations. Somebody, you know, right now, this place is, could be, quite candidly, one of the most special places in our county. And it has no value to me as a property owner to hold on to the 116 and put the money into it. I understand that the, the board has voted. And, but all I would say is that, you know, it's likely that the McCarters won't be on that corner living that home. And to me, that's disappointing. I mean, I wasn't, didn't want to put down any type of, certainly didn't want to be difficult, disrespectful, rude about it, you know, what's going through my head. The lawyer in me is saying, "Look, I'm not gonna be there. I'm just gonna be candid, frank, and honest. I developed property in this county and in Nashville. And what I, what I'll do at this point is, is there'll either be a for sale sign in the front yard with Mr. Jones first thing tomorrow morning. I've already talked to him about it. Or I'll find another avenue to develop the property. I won't be living at 450 East Main." And, you know, I was very serious about this and the proposal that I proposed and bringing these individuals in here and spending the money on the front end and attaching the home inspection report, as I was hopeful that your respective members would see how serious I am about it. But, you know, it's, it's, I'm not gonna do something, and I'm gonna say this very respectfully, I'm not gonna do something, one, I've got a wife, and I appreciate that Mr. Jakes and the things that he said about how easy that is. I'd like for him to go home with me tonight and explain that to my wife, and her feel comfortable with it. That just doesn't happen. Once you feel the way you feel, nothing's really gonna change that. When you, when you use words like asbestos, you think about the worst things. I live in a world, I understand that. My wife doesn't understand that. When you have homeless people living in your home that you've had to call the officers out there on two or three occasions, that's serious and significant. Explain that to my wife. That doesn't make her feel warm and fuzzy. I appreciate that you all want to preserve the historical significance. When I bought this property, weeds are growing this high on it. Shutters are falling off. It has this, the beauty of it, that it, when Mr. Hastings owned it and the beautiful pictures that we all remember, they're no longer there. And you've got somebody that's before you today that wants to make it better, wants to make it something that this whole community can take a lot of pride in. And, and by your vote today, it's, I'm not, and maybe it's just not in the cards for me and my family to have that place, but I just don't, you know, I don't see how that's best for the community. And with that being said, I say that very respectfully. Thank you.
Thank you. Diana, is there any other?
We need to approve the proposed calendar for-
Okay.
So I move.
Second.
Okay, second. Calendar's approved. Diana, also, you wanted to introduce the new director of planning and engineering?
Yes. Donald Anthony is our new director of planning. You all have not had an opportunity to meet him because you haven't met since he was appointed. But he's doing a great job and we love him.
And I'll owe her five dollars later. It's great to see you. Thanks so much. I really appreciate all the service that you put in. And I've worked with some of you before and some of you I haven't, but I'm looking forward to getting to know you. We've had a lot of staffing changes in our department over the last few months. And Diana's gonna be your designated staff contact, but feel free to contact me anytime as well. Please bear with us. We're gonna do the best that we can, but we're gonna rely on you to guide us just as much as, as we try to assist you. Thank you again.
Yeah, can you give us your name?
Donald Anthony.
Donald what?
Anthony.
Two first names.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Can I have something, too?
Ms. Linda?
Yes, when I was, when I was preparing for this meeting, I was thinking about, when I was going over our rules of order, I don't, it's not quite clear to me what, what kind of time limit we can work within if a house in our historic district needs to be demolished from lack of, I could care, like the one Ms. Baughman has.
I don't think we have demolition by neglect within the historic zoning-
Yeah, by neglect, yes, that's-
Demolition by neglect. But there may be something in the new building code ordinance that, because it's really quite extensive right now. And it seemed like it came up on a property somewhere around North University at some point in time. And this would have been about two years ago, maybe three. And I think staff determined that there was something maybe in that updated building codes ordinance that kind of addressed that. It had to do with the gutter situation. And, but there was nothing specifically within historic zoning classification that I recall that has to do with demolition by neglect. I remember it being talked about in the late, mid-eighties when this first created, but it never came to fruition to place that in there.
And at the staff level, we've discussed whether we should try to add something and if so, what it would look like and how it might be. But we have not concluded anything, and so nothing has been proposed to be added. But that's a, that's a difficult circumstance.
I know, it is.
It's very difficult, but we don't, we don't address it in the historic context.
July, August, September, October, November.
This would just be community-wide.
Six months.
If it's in the building codes, it'd be community-wide.
Right.
So let me just make sure I understand what you're asking. That if someone comes in here and you approve that they can have their historic home demoed, how much time are we allowing them until they redevelop it?
I'm not talking about a historic home.
Okay, so any home that's in this area that's demoed, how much time?
Yes, they can have to do that because it's, it's, I mean-
It'd have to be addressed in the building codes.
I don't know the answer off the top of my head, but I'll be happy to look into it.
Well, whatever is approved at this board, they have six months to- Well, whatever is approved at, at this board, they have six months to start working on the project. So, if there's no activity in six months and 10 months later they come back and want to do it again, they have to come back before the board.
And of course, the, well, presumably, that, yes, they have six months to start on the other two prop, uh, other two structures.
Mm-hmm, correct.
Uh, I'd want to comment that I think this may be the most difficult structure, situation that I've seen since I've been working with you all.
It is.
I think, personally, I think this, this situation's much more difficult than the Mary Baughman situation.
Oh, yeah.
They'd had a fire, they'd had...
There's no comparison, there's no...
So, they're not, not really the, not the same, uh, and yet, and I certainly haven't gone to look at this, I, I wouldn't know what I was looking at if I did, but it, it's a difficult situation. And I, I, I appreciate your struggle.
Well, I was, I was aware that, um, the McCarter's want to improve the whole area. And I've been sitting and looking at this beautiful property go down for 10 straight years. And the thought of somebody coming back in and putting the money and the good taste in it that was gonna make me proud to live there again. I'm just afraid now, I'm so disappointed because it's gonna sit there longer now and just, um, go down in that beautiful front house. Because who wants to take on all this?
And Mary May, I'm sorry to say that, but also, what really, really bugs me is, first of all, we have pleaded with the, the Board of Realtors to be sure, and when they're showing people homes in the historic district, to give them the brochure we have, as far as the rules, um, of, of living in the historic district, that there are some specifications, and, and it's a responsibility. And it's not like moving into a subdivision. It's something totally different. And we've, we've dealt with this time and time again, not this serious, Mary May. This is, I mean, this is the most upsetting thing I've, I've had to do on this board. But we've had people come to us, or, or they haven't come to us, and they've started doing renovations or tear downs, and they didn't even know that they were in the historic district.
And some were actually realtors, a married couple of realtors.
Oh, my goodness.
You what? Oh, my heavens.
They replaced the windows, they bought this investment house, and now he stopped them and they put the windows back on the front, but they were married couple of realtors and they knew better.
That's right, I forgot about that, Jim.
Well, I, I, I'm just, I'm just hoping that, uh, when things settle down, the McCarter's are not gonna give up on this property because, as Bill stated, that, that particular home and its, its, um, importance to the district, I think, can be incorporated in what the McCarter's want to do and with the security and everything else. And that's what I'm hoping.
He didn't even mention how, um, how the main structure has probably deteriorated inside and how much it's gonna take.
We need that.
Yeah, the main house.
Huh? It's not, okay. Not deteriorating?
Landscaping sure has.
Oh, yes.
I had an auction of the property, I did go in the yellow house, and it was having problems then, I haven't seen it since.
Well, Baba was offered a pretty good price for that. He just was in too deep. I believe it.
I would say, see, that house is probably antiviral. I would say my house is eight, that, it was 1861. It had jib windows on the front as well. If you look at the entry, it's probably antiviral. I think the porch was modified or added in the 1870s, 1880s. It got that little, it's a little, to it. Look, if you come out the front door of the yellow house, the house to the right is painted green, it's got the same front porch.
Yes.
I always love that combination, that, that one corner, like, my gosh, this is a great corner.
Yeah.
But, uh...
Could be.
Could be, could be.
Diana, um, we didn't all get this packet, not that, because we're only dealing with the demolished at this time, that it, it was just too much to look at when we first came in here. I mean, it would take hours to get through it. So...
You were mailed or, or emailed an electronic copy, um, which is just something...
Yeah, but the electronic copy didn't have anything like this.
Didn't have the home inspection report.
No, it didn't have that.
Oh, I, I happened to get one that, that did, and I, that's why...
Okay.
Did you get an email copy or a printed copy?
She got a printed copy. Anybody whose email address bounced back got a printed copy. Our calls are, are really, you have to watch it at our office.
It's just...
I mean, I hope it's that he'll come back and talk to Kirsten, who's my staff person, and then we can talk further about things and ways in which we can.
I really...
Yeah.
Hope he heard me, that I, I, I would love to see him put a fence around that structure and incorporate it.
If I could talk to Kirsten, could you possibly, if I had to keep my mouth shut, I'd like to do that.
Thank you.
I'd like to talk. Could you shut off the rear wing, turn the house 90 degrees and put it where the pool house is? And you take the cost of the pool house and the cost of, since it was moved there in the first place, although it's been there more than 50 years, could you keep the house, the front section of the house, and make it the pool house? You could either evolve it to Vine Street.
The front facade's all that matters, really.
Yeah.
Put all the gable ends with the brackets. Is that transitional greve, Italian, that's very prevalent here in this community.
There are two shed roof additions on there that were definitely added later.
I'm sorry?
There are two shed roof additions off the sides that were definitely added later.
No, it was just here. It was just sitting here.
This should, or, may have been original, but I question whether it was just not.
Yeah.
But I would say the house is earlier. If you look at the pictures of the mantles, I think the interior has changed and when the time of porch was modified, in the 70s or 80s.
The only tricky part is the 1870 deed specifically says it's conveying a lot. And, and it doesn't mention any structures or, or...
I'm just saying, it's the original design of the house, before it was moved, it was an earlier house, and then it was moved and things were changed.
Okay.
And so, our two, our new, um, I guess, I guess we really ought to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor of adjourn in the meeting?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, meeting adjourned.